Thank you, please be seated. Okay, I'm gonna just quickly read our statement, a conflict of interest. All members of the City Council, the responsibility to comply with the terms, Chapter 7.2b, and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal financial or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2b to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal financial or business interest. So I'll now ask for item five, please.
Item five, Resolution 2022-44, Appointing a Presiding Municipal Judge to the Lakewood Municipal Court.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on item five, Resolution 2022-44. Nobody's indicated a desire to speak in chambers. Does anybody online wish to speak on this particular item? Okay, do not see anybody then, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-44. Second?
Second.
Okay, looks like we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Counselor Springsteen.
Yes, I would just note that I was not able to participate in the executive session on this issue because the city would not accommodate a virtual option for that. And so, any vote I'm making against this motion would be in relation to that because I have not had the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else before we vote? Well, I would just say that these opportunities do not come often, and this is an exciting time for our city and certainly the future of our courts as we go forward. And I think we have an incredible candidate here who we're gonna be able to vote on. And just say something that really resonated with Judge Bozarth is just her desire to continue to meet the community where they're at and their willingness to, your willingness to engage, whether it's homeless court, veterans court, domestic violence, all these different opportunities where maybe people's worst day, and that's where you're gonna see them, but your goal is also to get them out and get them into a better position. So I'm excited to support this moving forward. And with that, we'll ask for a vote. Can somebody press no? Okay. And they gotta lock somebody out. She's a yes. Can we press her? Can you press her? Yes, okay. One second. Sorry to keep you in suspense. I'm pretty sure it's just fine. There we go. Passes eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. So congratulations. And with that, I'd love to have you come down to the podium, and we will swear you in. And if your family would like to join you, or if anybody wants to come and get a picture behind or in front, however you'd like to do it.
Just kinda switched the hand, but that's okay.
Will you raise your right hand? All right. Here we go. I, Nicole Bozarth.
I, Nicole Bozarth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordances of the City of Lakewood.
The Charter and Ordances of the City of Lakewood.
And to faithfully perform the duties of presiding municipal judge.
And faithfully perform the duties of presiding municipal judge.
For the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
For the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And if I could just say a few words.
Please, of course. What is yours?
I just wanna thank you all, Mayor Paul, City Council. Excuse me, I wrote my words down because I don't wanna neglect to say anything. This is a lifetime opportunity for me, and I don't wanna miss anything. So, thank you for your patience. Thank you all for giving me this phenomenal opportunity to continue serving our community and the citizens of Lakewood. It has been a privilege, to say the least, to serve as a judge for the Lakewood Municipal Court, and it is one of my greatest honors to serve as the presiding judge for the City of Lakewood. Since I can remember, I've always led my life with a determination and a desire to be in public service and give back to the community. It has been a privilege to watch Judge Davik lead the court for the past two years, and I know I have very big shoes to fill. I'm sad to say that she's retiring. She's earned it, she deserves it. But I look forward to working hard and continuing with all the amazing work that she has done for the court and for this community. I am grateful to work with the dedicated staff of the court who works incredibly hard each and every day. I'm honored that many of them came here tonight. It is an incredible team who worked tirelessly since I started two years ago at the beginning of COVID. They've done it with a smile on their face, and their commitment to the city consistently has remained strong. I want to thank them for all they do, thank them, especially those for appearing virtually as well this evening. I wanna sincerely thank my family, who has been so supportive and patient with me while I worked towards this dream of becoming a judge. Many of them are joining in person or virtually this evening. I would not be where I am without their constant guidance and love and support. I'm very lucky, and I hope I can set an example for my kids, that if you work hard and importantly treat people with kindness, you can reach your dreams. I would look forward to continuing to collaborate with this City Council, Mayor Paul, manager Kathy Hotson, and all of the city's leaders to ensure that Lakewood remains one of the best cities to live, work, and play. The City of Lakewood is lucky to have the leadership that it does, and I'm, again, honored to be a part of it. It is an underestimate to say that I am grateful for this chance to lead this court for many years to come. Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, certainly nicely done, and I know Judge Davik is here with us, too. We wanna thank you for your dedicated service. And see Judge Ramsey, we have a few of our other judges in the house. So thank you all for all that you do. And we're gonna take, this body will take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back at 7:20, and then you all can enjoy the reception. We'll join you out there. So we will adjourn at 7:10. We'll be back in 10.
All right, we'll reconvene the Lakewood City Council meeting on May 23, 2022 at 7:22 PM. Note that all those present prior are still with us, and we'll move into public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons observe decorum whether they're in chambers or calling in. Each person will have three minutes. And if you're in chambers, which I'm going to disperse with that because I know we have one person who's going to speak a little bit, she'll get that. If you're online and you are going to speak, when your time is at 30 seconds, you'll hear a ding. When your time is up, you'll hear a double ding. And with that, I'll now open. I will note that we had six comments on Lakewood speaks that had to do with lawn replacement as well as the safe parking, which that'll be a first reading ordinance. So again, we won't have comments on that tonight. Nobody in chambers wishes to speak under general. I'll move to the internet. Looks like Mr. Klaus, your hand is up. You give us, let's see, we have your name and your award. We'll get your three minutes going.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I just wanted to add some additional context to the comment that I left on Lakewood speaks earlier last week. So I think the provision in municipal code section 9.80, I think it's 010, I believe. So that totally made sense for a certain time when water needs may not have been what they are now. And I also understand that code enforcement needs to have some sort of tool in order to make inquiries with, you know, problem properties or blighted properties that totally makes sense. But this sort of seems like a heavy-handed tool for something that, like nowadays, probably requires more of a scalpel. I just kind of feel that, like, given our current water levels, like, I live in Ward 1 Northwest Lakewood, Maple Grove Reservoir, according to the Consolidated Mutual website, is at 44% capacity. Obviously, I'm not blaming that on watering lawns. But I think, given our current water levels, we just need to consider serious change, which empowers individual property owners who want to pursue better resource management. I also noticed that in section 9.80.010, there's like a list of desirable plant species, but there's still a limit length at 12 inches. But then if you look at 9.80.28, it already states that safety hazards or other hazards are prohibited. So it seems like maybe this 12-inch limit and safety hazards pieces are sort of in conflict with one another. And like, it might just be better to, like, remove the limit and leave the safety hazards piece, like, leave that to the discretion of code enforcement. And then lastly, there's the piece being A4 of 9.8.020 that mentions height limitations do not apply to flower gardens, your skate gardens, vegetable gardens, pots of shrubbery, grain plots, pastures for feed, fodder or forage. So like, we have bees on our property. So I mean, I guess, like, that, like, our lawn with wildflowers might constitute forage, but like, they're not contained to our lawn either. So like, they're, they kind of wander wherever. We also have chickens. So I mean, like, would that be considered, like, you know, feed if they're, like, grazing in our lawn? Like, it just seems like there are areas of, like, overlap that could probably use, like, just a little more finer tuning. Because, again, yeah, I think code enforcement should have the ability to discern a problem property from someone who's just trying to pursue better resource management. And, yeah, that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That must have been some background. All right, anybody else online wish to speak under general public comment? Okay, I will close general public comment and move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, the use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council actions. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinance appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by city council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. I'll ask the clerk to read those items in, and I know councillor Janson would like to pull some of those.
The consent agenda consists of items seven through 14. Item seven, resolution 2022-39, appointment of a member to the Lakewood Judicial Review Commission. Item eight, resolution 2022-40, approving award of funds under 2022 Lakewood Community Grant Program. Item nine, resolution 2022-41, endorsing amendment to Lakewood 2022-2023 Head Start Grant Application for Purpose of Submitting Request to Federal Government for Supplemental Funds Available to Provide a Cost of Living Adjustment to Staff in Head Start and Early Head Start. Item 10, resolution 2022-42, endorsing amendment to Lakewood 2022-23 Head Start Grant Application for the Purpose of Submitting Request to Federal Government for Supplemental Funds Available for Quality Improvement of Services in Lakewood Head Start Program. Eleven, item 11, resolution 2022-43, approving Lakewood's participation in the Region 10 Colorado Regional Opioid Intergovernmental Agreement pursuant to the Terms of the 2021 Colorado Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding. Item 12, ordinance O2022-5, setting the salaries of court, municipal court judges. Item 13, emergency ordinance O2022-6, adopting Title 8, Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with establishing a pilot program for the Colorado Safe Parking Initiative. Item 14, accepting minutes of boards and commissions, Lakewood Advisory Commission Full Commission Meeting, March 16, 2022.
Thank you. Nicely done. So councillor Janson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove item number eight, resolution 2022-40, from consent agenda. I would like to remove item number nine, resolution 2022-41, from the consent agenda for a separate vote and some discussion. I would like to remove item number 10, resolution 2022-42, removed for a separate vote. Thank you.
Okay. So now I'll open the public hearing on the consent agenda item minus items eight, nine, and 10. Nobody's indicated a wish to speak. Ms. Alexander, we'll bring you right back after this and get you up here so you don't have to wait. Anybody online wish to speak to those items? Seeing none, close public comment. I'll ask for a motion on the consent minus eight, nine, and 10.
Mayor Paul, I move for the acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions. Order all ordinances with the exception of items eight, item nine, and item 10 introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councillor Sharrazaii.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize and thank staff for their quick response with the safe parking ordinance. I know that this is first reading and that we'll have more discussion, and I believe an opportunity to discuss some amendments at a later date, but I just want to recognize and appreciate that work there, so, thank you.
Okay, and I would also like to acknowledge Ms. Jennifer Kilpatrick, who is going to be nominated this evening to join our Judicial Review Commission to serve a four-year term. So we want to thank her for her willingness to serve. And if there are no other comments or questions, please cast your votes. Okay, could we please have the votes for councillor Franks and I, Janson, I, Springsteen, That passes eight i's, one nay, the nay being Springsteen. Okay, we'll move back to general business, and will the clerk please reread item eight into the record?
Item eight, resolution 2022-40, approving award of funds under 2022 Lakewood Community Grant Program.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. Ms. Alexander, you are up. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you, Lakewood City Council. This is the first time I've been able to speak here personally. I'm the operations director at the Action Center, and I wanted to give you a pulse of what's happening at the Action Center as representative of our community and certainly answer any questions and mostly say thank you. I understand we are up for a $15,000 grant under the community grant program, and for that, we are extraordinarily grateful. A little bit of data, is my job is responsible for a lot of our distributions, food being absolutely the most important thing that we're doing probably right now, as far as under my area of expertise. Rental assistance is probably the other huge one right now. A little bit of data, pre-COVID, the Action Center saw about 65 households a day coming for food. Throughout COVID, the last two years, that number jumped between 80 and 200 households a day for food. And for the last six months, that number has been steadily going up. We are now serving over 260 households a day, still through a drive-through. The scary and terrifying thing to me right now is a lot of our COVID funding is coming to an end. Additional benefits through SNAP, universal free lunches, a lot of these kinds of things are coming to an end, and our numbers are probably going to continue to go up. We really can't do that. We are not set up to service that many people. Our funding is not set up to deal with that much food. And this $15,000 is amazing. I also wanted to do a reality check that we are going to have some huge challenges. The next six months, I'm more terrified than I have been all through COVID on what the future looks like. Those of you that have been shopping lately have seen the cost of food going up, the cost of gas going up, rental rates going up. And I think one of the things that happened during COVID was that the use of a food bank and a food pantry was normalized. Because folks, it was on TV all the time, right? People that didn't normally need to come to a food pantry came to a food pantry. And I just think that the world has changed a lot, and it's a little easier for people to ask for help that are on the edge, and now they're getting hit with all these additional costs, food, housing, gas. So we are going to go inside and try to service as many folks as we can inside because we just can't continue to do 260 people outside forever. So we will be coming inside, and we will be doing the best we can to address this huge need in a lot of different creative ways. So thank you for the $15,000 as part of the community grant program, and thank you for anything that you can do for our community to help the folks that we have that are really struggling, and it's a real huge issue. And thank you for all you're doing, and please be aware that just because COVID may be dwindling, the need, in fact, may be growing. So with that, I'll say thanks.
Great, thank you.
And come over and see us at the Action Center anytime. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else online? Before councillors, let me go ahead and get a motion read in. Mayor Protem, can you make a motion for item eight, please?
Mayor Paul, I move for the acceptance of ordinance-
Just the adoption of resolution 2022-40, please.
I move for the adoption of 2022-40.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Councillor Janson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. So I was looking at our Colorado Constitution, and on the Constitution, Article 11, Section 2, I'm going to read it to you, it says, "Neither the state nor any county, city, town, township, or school district shall make any donation or grant to or in aid of or become a subscriber to or shareholder in any corporation or company or a joint owner with any person, company, or corporation, public or private, in or out of the state except as to such ownership as may accrue to the state by a sheet," which is the default in taxes. And so because of this, I cannot vote, I will be of a no vote on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. It's very humbling to have the folks from the Action Center thank us for doing something for the community. Now, you folks do tenfold, a hundredfold what we do. Thank you very much. I will be voting for this.
Councillor Sharrazaii, and then Mayor Protem Vincent, who was on the committee.
I just had a question of clarity, and also thank the Action Center. In my day job, we work closely with you all, and so I really appreciate all of the great work that you're doing. We've got young people accessing the food bank every day, and so, you know, grateful for that support. I just, and maybe this is a question for councillor Vincent, but is there, like, not floors and ceilings to these requests? Because one request came in for $100,000, I think we're granting $5,000. Like, it just feels really, is this normal? I just didn't have a sense of what that grant application looked like. Were people going to be surprised with the response of what they were being awarded? So.
Great question. Mayor Protem?
These are small grants, and there were a lot of requests and a lot of people. So the committee worked very diligently. As a matter of fact, I was glad to see members of the Lakewood Advisory Committee on there too. So that was good, that public input. So there were huge asks, and I think maybe some people did not understand kind of the direction of that $100,000. So some, we had to cut back some places, and we tried to give out as much as we could. So that, that's why. In fact, we had one, I think it was last year, that said there was too much paperwork for the amount of money they got, so they declined it. So we only gave $98,000. I know there's a real need and a request for actually more funds, if we can find that in next year's budget, because the need was so great. And I think there was just maybe one or two of the ones that we approved that got their full ask. Does that, does that help? Okay.
And, you know, certainly, as we look at these processes, if these are things we need to change, I think Ms. Andrews told me that we had $368,000 worth of requests this year. And this is a program that goes back a few councils and really honed in on the fact that for a long time, you know, we'd get random asks throughout the year to support different nonprofits in the community. And so this was a nice way for us to figure out and make sure that everybody had the opportunity to come forward and be part of this. And during budget season, I would certainly entertain a conversation, look at maybe increasing this if it's possible. These nonprofits do incredible work in our community and really do things that we can't, and they can do it a lot better to help ease suffering. Councillor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. There is another side to the requests and the payout amounts. In the year I was mayor Protem, one of the applicants asked for a quite large grant, and one of the board, one of the members from the LAC found out, took their finances and found out that half of the grant they were asking for was going to pay for the- of the grant they were asking for was going to pay for the president of the corporation for a salary. So a lot of those things probably shouldn't be included in these grants also.
Okay, so that's all that we have, a motion and a second is on the floor. Please cast your votes. Can somebody hit a yes for Counselor Franks? Yes for Counselor Springsteen, and a no for Counselor Janson, please. Okay, that passes eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Janson. Okay, will the clerk please reread item nine into the record?
Item nine, Resolution 2022-41, endorsing amendment to Lakewood 2022-2023 Head Start Grant Application for Purpose of Submitting Request to Federal Government for Supplemental Funds Available to Provide a Cost of Living Adjustment to Staff in Head Start and Early Head Start.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-41. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close that and ask for a motion on Resolution 2022-41.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Counselor Janson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Again, here we are, again, on federal grants coming into our state, and again, our debt is already $150 billion more from the last time that we spoke about this, and I just want to know, is this the proper role of our federal government to provide this program? I just don't, I will be voting no on this, again, because I just don't want to take any federal money. I think this is something that we can do from a community standpoint, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, motion is second. Please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, cast your vote, please. Okay. So she's present.
She's still online?
Yeah, she's present, she's online. Guess we can lock her out, and that'll be seven ayes, one nay, the nay being Janson.
If I may-
Please.
Mayor Paul, it could be considered one of two things. It could be considered an abstention or that she's left the meeting. Fortunately, because of the way the votes have shaken out, it does really have a distinction without a difference, it doesn't affect the outcome.
Correct. Sir, so at this case, let's just indicate that, because we don't allow abstentions unless there's a financial, so we'll just do that as the person is left, Counselor Springsteen is left, for this portion. Okay, will the clerk please reread item 10?
Item 10, Resolution 2022-42, endorsing amendment to Lakewood 2022-2023 Head Start Grant Application for the Purpose of Submitting Request to Federal Government for Supplemental Funds Available for Quality Improvement of Services in Lakewood Head Start Program.
I'll now open the public hearing. Nobody wishes to speak, so ask for a motion on 2022-42.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Counselor Janson.
I don't need to say anything, I'd just like to vote.
Okay, motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, if you are with us, can you indicate by turning on your screen? I see that you're in the meeting.
Didn't she vote by voice?
She's not even bringing her voice in anything. All right, that passes seven ayes, one nay, the nay being Janson. Okay, we'll continue into our general business, and looks like our first item up is Counselor Sharazai and a request.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think a number of us are receiving a lot of information about encampments, particularly those that are representing portions of Lakewood that have the West Colfax Corridor running through it, and so I was hoping that we could just have an opportunity to hear from staff, an update on, you know, like, an emergency-level response, I guess, is what I'm looking for, and better understanding of information so that the public can hear, because I think there's some desire from the public for us to act quickly, and we do have some restraint in that, and also to just remind folks that it's not illegal to be homeless, and so was hoping to just get a little insight from staff on that, really specifically what happens to our unhoused population's stuff when they're moved, understanding better what's the order of operations that community members could go execute if they're requesting some more information about encampments, and then how does this look as we start to look at our budgeting cycle for the next year? Is there an opportunity for us to be responding with increased staffing, particularly around the navigators? It's a lot, questions at once, so go for it.
Goldstein, please.
Thank you. I'll do my best to unpack it. So City Council identified addressing the unhomed as a priority for them, for the city, and staff began working on that immediately. So cross-departmental teams have been meeting on identifying solutions, also when possible to provide services to those who are experiencing homelessness, and get them in a safer place, and also address some of the concerns in the community or from property owners that have homeless encampments on them. I think one of the key priorities and one of the key hires that will be coming back in front of council is a homeless navigator, I mean, sorry, a homeless coordinator position, and that, in the specific comments that you shared through your request for council action, Councilmember Sharazai, there was some concern about coordination on property where it might be in the city right-of-way, it might be with CDOT, it might be RTD, and I think there's a lot of concern in the community that they're getting the runaround, they don't know who to talk to. I think that hire will play a key role in that coordination. Staff's doing much of the work right now, but sometimes it is difficult, and in many cases, staff already has a full workload. So addressing these challenges in the community are on top of, you know, already extended schedules and such, and they're being addressed by staff that aren't necessarily trained on it. You know, if it's in the public right-of-way, it's different than a CAT agent who deals with homeless all the time. You might have a parks worker or a maintenance worker from the Public Works Department working to clear that encampment or work with those individuals. Staff is working as a team, but we think this coordination through the coordinator position will really help in that. Staff's also working on a regional effort with other cities in Jefferson County to have background services available through a navigation center. I think everyone knows that the first center is looking to be located in the city of Nevada, and I think that will be a key asset for Lakewood and the rest of the Jefferson County cities as a way to not just move someone along, but move them into a better position in their life. Did that touch everything?
Yes, a couple of follow-ups. Is the coordinator position in this budget cycle? So will we see that position being hired in the near term?
Yes.
Okay. Is it posted currently?
No.
Not to get in the weeds, okay. And then can we share a little bit about what the timeline looks like? So if folks, you know, I hear from folks, and I know there's other counselors up here that, you know, there's an expectation if there's an encampment that we're going to come and move this along right-of-way. Can you share a little bit about what that timeline often looks like?
I believe what you might be referring to is the 72-hour posting requirement. Deputy City Attorney Dorteck and myself were just chatting about that, because that point's a little bit in flux right now, so I will let him speak to it a little bit, but just know that it's a bit in flux. But we do attempt, y'all speak broadly, we do attempt to work with the unhomed, also respecting that the community wishes, particularly if it's on their property, is to get someone into a different place that's not, you know, adjacent to where it's impacting them.
And to address that, I think what Mr. Goldstein was referring to is a recent 10th Circuit Court decision, which struck down a seven-day posting for homeless sweeps. Obviously, that deals with federal as opposed to state law, and so there's potential for different state law incursions, and there's always the possibility that could be appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court. So it is very much in flux, and to really get to the heart of the matter that you're, I think you're referring to, each situation's going to be different, and so what specific enforcement or otherwise actions that can be taken will depend on the jurisdiction that someone happens to be on, whether or not they're actually committing a crime, or whether or not they just happen to be there, and every situation's going to be different.
And a quick follow-up to that, though, the court has also ruled, though, even with 72 days in moving, if you don't have beds, it throws everything out of whack, right? If you don't have an opportunity for sheltering, then that puts more things in limbo.
That is one of the things that Aurora had in theirs, in the judgment against them. So I think that's something we're certainly working towards. There are other ways to address it, too, and I think our CAT team's pretty skilled with the addition of the two homeless navigators that they currently have in finding really creative ways, because I think in many cases, people don't want to be homeless. So if you can help them find a way forward and a way out of homelessness, then they're willing to take that path. They might need a little assistance to get there, and that's the role that the homeless navigators are playing. You know, I was speaking to someone earlier today about it, and it might be as simple as getting an ID, because without that proof of identity, then they can't, you know, do a lot of different things. So the homeless navigators will walk them all the way through that process to help them get that first step, and then they're off and running. So I think that's a pretty critical piece that we added to assist with this effort.
Mayor Protem Vincent?
And I appreciate the coordinator position. As you know, our board has got a lot of this, and what is frustrating to some of the people, too, is not only the coordination, because they see the people leaving, but all the trash is left behind, and the needles, et cetera. So if we have something that coordinates all that, so when it's gone, or you give the 72-hours notice, and then you can get things moved and trashed and cleaned, not trashed, removed, the trash, and cleaned up, that would help. But I realize that this is in the pipeline right now. What I'm wondering is, can we get some sort of, almost like, white paper or yes or no's? Because we've actually had people who have said, "I guess I can't remove the homeless people from my front yard, because they say they have rights, and I can't do anything about that." So I just, those are the kind of misinformation things that are going out there. So is there anything that says, "If it's on the right-of-way, we can do this, CDOT has this property, you have to contact them," some of those sort of things? I don't know, like a generic, so at least all counselors have the same information if someone calls them.
Yeah, I think we can certainly work on homelessness FAQ or something like that, so that there's an additional reference guide out there for you all, and then also for the community. I do think we would probably encourage folks to work through the police department or through the Request Lakewood system, rather than attempting to move a homeless encampment along on their own.
And I would agree with that. The calls I get are from frightened people who say, "How, do I really have to put up with this?" No, you can call the non-emergency number.
Absolutely.
I will push it forward, but that's the kind of thing that's going on out there. Businesses that are absentee landlords, that you can't get in touch with, those sort of things. But if we could get an FAQ kind of thing, I think that would help.
I think we can work on that, and again, utilization of the Request Lakewood system works really well. It allows for better coordination, tracking on all levels, and then, you know, we're working with the CAT team in most cases to have that first contact.
Exactly. Thank you.
Counselor Abel?
Thank you. It's glad this subject is approached. There was a Ninth Circuit ruling on the West Coast, I believe, that said that you can't ban camping unless you have facilities to offer to folks that you want to prevent from camping, as long as they want shelter. Now, I noticed that has come up in the Aurora case, in Aurora's camping ban discussion, and a former city attorney told us that that really doesn't apply to us. There was a Denver judge, I believe, that made a similar ruling, but then that got overturned. Where are we on that?
That's an incredibly well-layered question. I can answer bits and parts of it, but I think what would be best is to answer in written form for the entire council at a later time. I could get up here and talk for 20 or 30 minutes, I don't know if it would be enlightening, but I think what would better answer that question in a usable fashion would be, again, to answer in written form, which I will do.
Okay. There's one other thing, and it's a fairly specific question to one instance we had, but RTD said that they didn't have jurisdiction on the ground, only the railroad tracks that are elevated. That became an issue because some folks were camping underneath the tracks. When you do that paper, could you also look, I believe that RTD's right-of-way is a duplicate of the Burlington Northern Right-of-Way that existed along that line to start with. They didn't have elevated tracks, that was on the ground. So it would seem to me by the previous use, the previous right-of-way, which is inherited or whatever by RTD, that it would be, it would encompass the ground level and everything above, so.
I'll certainly include that.
Thank you.
And so just to circle back, this was a request for action. It sounds like Counselor Sharazai, we are on our way with what we're trying to do with this update, and the question was to make sure that we have budgetary considerations that those will be brought forward when we start talking about the budget, and then continue, that we continue to work on these things from the retreat moving forward. So there's really not, I guess, a formal action or ask, right?
Correct. I just, it's been a minute since we've had our retreat, I wanted to make sure, you know, this is top of mind for a lot of us who get increased calls, and so balancing, making sure that community members feel safe, but also making sure that folks understand that, you know, the increased needs of our unhoused population is not, there's no illegality to that, and we need to make sure that we're balancing both of those things. And so I know we're getting ready to think about our budget needs in the future, this probably will need some additional resources to be considered in that, so.
Great, thank you. Good discussion. Counselor Stewart, you're going to have a potential LAC assignment, as well as a couple, maybe add-ons from some of the feedback we've been getting.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I did put in a request for council action, like I spoke to last week, about potentially having our city look at some options for water-wise landscaping and supporting people in their desire to replace their turf. I know one of the reasons this is really top of mind is that the Legislative Committee on this council had been watching a bill at the state that was going to infuse some additional dollars into turf replacement programs in order to continue to help residents and individuals who wanted to direct-scape or put in more native plants and just reduce their overall residential water usage. I really appreciated the feedback that we've gotten from the community. I think a couple of important points have been raised, so I just have a couple of requests for action real quickly, but I think it's really important to note that according to water studies by Colorado State University, fully 55% of residential water usage is landscaping and lawns. State University, fully 55% of residential water usage is landscaping and lawns. That means if you live in a home with landscaping and a lawn, so a single-family home most likely, that more than half of one's overall water usage is spent outside, especially watering lawns, made predominantly from things like Kentucky bluegrass that are not native to Colorado, and frankly, just don't belong in wise water usage plans here in this area. And then, again, residential water usage used by landscaping and lawns is fully over 40% of overall municipal water usage. So it's a huge amount of water, and I know I have heard so many concerns expressed from residents about our water usage. I think especially the issues around the Bear Creek Lake Reservoir really bring to bear that we are dealing with extreme water shortages in this changing climate, and that it's really important to adapt so that we can become a more resilient community. And just because of the sheer volume of water that is used by residential landscaping, that feels like a really great opportunity for us to reduce our residential water usage pretty significantly. So that is kind of the background about why I brought this forward. This seems like a project that is great for the LAC to take on. There are a lot of different municipalities who are already engaging in some form of turf replacement program, whether or not that be simply connecting residents with resources, or also, again, it's very expensive to replace your turf. And there are a lot of barriers that are not just financial, that prevent people from being able to do that even if they want to. So what I really would like is for us to send this to the Lakewood Advisory Commission, so that they can look at what other municipalities that are comparable to Lakewood in the area are doing, how we can utilize the funds that are inevitably coming down from the state to support this, and then any other barriers specifically that are, you know, we have a unique community, we have a lot of different water districts, and so that presents some uniqueness that I think is really important to take into consideration as the LAC moves forward with this. I think, you know, we heard some comments about municipal code. I think there are also really interesting conversations and explorations around covenant-controlled communities, and if there's any information or any support that we can offer covenant-controlled communities to help potentially update or provide better resources for those residents who live in some of those restrictions as well. So those are kind of the things that I'd like the LAC to look at. And then I think it's really important to timestamp this kind of thing. If we want action, this is really necessary to, I want an update. So it was suggested, and I really like this idea, to ask that the city manager meet with the LAC within about six weeks, and bring us back some sort of an update on kind of what they're thinking and how we can move forward. So that is what has been suggested to me, and what I would suggest for council action. Thank you.
Okay, so that will be the consensus that we'll be looking for. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to share my support for moving this to the LAC for review, but also while doing that, I wanted to share that, you know, certainly I'm someone who has zero lawn, and, you know, I do realize that resources can be expensive. Just wanted the community to hear that the Sustainable Green Mountain Neighborhood Group, they had a plant giveaway in which, you know, there were native plants or plants that are low water. There's buy-nothing groups where I see all the time, people, maybe they're wanting to put in, convert maybe a rocked-in area to concrete, and they're giving away the rock. And then there's a lot of programs on converting, you know, lawn into food-producing areas. And I have personal knowledge of the turf replacement program in Greeley, which has a lot of good points. And so I just wanted to share all that, that I think that there are a lot of folks in my neighborhood who are already making those conversions, and some are doing it in a very low-cost way, but again, others who may want to do it. It's also labor-intensive, and so we're seeing people pair with one another, where someone can provide the materials, somebody else provide the labor. So I am certainly in support of this, but wanted to give the community a few ideas in case they've got a project in mind, that they've got some resources that they can tap into. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm all for this as well. When I moved into Lakewood, my acre had buffalo grass all across it, and I've not had to put a drop of water on it in 30 years. That said, some problems can arise with the replacement for the landscaping. Concrete, for instance, Ms. Franks has a very high amount of greenhouse gas emissions that lasts for some time, so I'm hoping that LAC will weigh those kind of imbalances. But, you know, the one limiting factor to population growth along the Front Range is water, and we may have to choose whether we grow anymore, or whether we slake our thirst. So, but I'm all for anything we can do to save the water we have.
Great. And Counselor Franks, your hand went back up, did you?
It did. Just one clarifying point. I certainly was not advocating for a concrete replacement, but some folks may be converting an area to be able to park an RV. So during that conversion, sometimes that frees up other resources, which could be a rock. So I wanted to acknowledge Counselor Abel's point, that certainly there are costs to that solution, but I wasn't advocating for it, just saying that might be a way in which resources got freed up. Thanks.
Great. Okay, so we have an outline of the question, and is there anybody who does not want to see this move forward? Speak your piece. Okay, so we'll go ahead and send that. Mr. Goldstein, if you have any clarifying questions, or we need to circle back, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, maybe just real quickly, I know Councilmember Stewart, you requested the city manager meet with LAC. There might be other members of staff that are better suited, that are already familiar with this area focus from our Sustainability Group, so if you're okay with that, I think that might be better suited.
City manager or designee.
Very well.
Cool. And then the last one is Counselor Olvers, who's not here, but what we've done is, we do have a financial update coming up in the next few weeks with our CFO, and we will have those questions addressed at that meeting to address Counselor Olvers' questions that he brought forth. Mayor Protem.
I just, is another piece part of this, is that maybe not everybody has an understanding of how we put the taper funds into that, and should we think about having an executive session with that ever-famous list that we have, where it's at, where it's going? There hasn't been an update on that for a long time.
Go ahead.
I see some heads going.
Just for clarification there, are you looking for the list of...
Properties.
...that are of interest to the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I've heard some misinformation around that, and then the taper funds that are related to that, and then separately, we'll have the CFO, right, saying how much money is left in there?
No. What I would suggest is, I think, rather than having an executive session, have council members who wish to learn about the process and the list to just sit down with staff, because that's what we did previously, two by two.
Sure. That works for me.
And I think we can make staff available for that if council chooses not to do an exec session.
Counselor Abel. For another topic.
Okay. All right, go ahead. General business.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. Firstly, and I know we'll be talking about SGI and affordable properties here in a few weeks, however, tonight would have been the last night for us to spare the already-approved affordable allocations for this year from expiring. This will be the third year in a row that we have lost 40% of our total allocations that had been set aside for affordable, and they're gone. They'll now be used for, if they're used at all, they'll be used for market rate and other purposes. So I think that's, again, a tragic loss. We have not had one allocation used, as far as I know, for affordable housing since they were awarded. My other concern is, Ms. Springsteen, some weeks back, got a letter, we're all aware of it. It is, "I'm concerned that we're not pursuing the source of that letter with any vigor." The, we may be, we don't know about it, but the tone of that letter was one of the most threatening, vile things I have ever seen sent to the city council or any of our members. I don't think the mayor would have been foolish enough to use his name twice in a threatening letter like that, but then, you know, maybe it was a red herring. You know, check me out, see if I sent it. I don't know where it came from, but whoever sent that needs to be put away. It is vile, it is very threatening, and it should make everyone that sits up here uneasy, that anyone could, would think of sending a letter like that to any of us. It's intimidating, it's an attempt to influence a public official, and, you know, it was a death threat. So I would urge that if it is not being pursued for investigation vigorously, that we should insist it will be. There's a, there was a false report delivered against an Aurora councilwoman. It was not nearly as vile, well, it was pretty vile, but it's being investigated on two levels, and, you know, we do not need to minimize this kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under general business? Okay, we'll go to council reports, and whoever wants to go first, go ahead. Okay, Mayor Protem.
No report.
All right. We'll just go up the chain to word three.
The only thing that I have to say is, in lieu of a formal ward meeting this month, I'll be holding office hours tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. here at our council workspace in City Hall, and I would love to chat with you.
Thank you. Counselor Springsteen.
Well, I tried to raise my hand after Counselor Abel, but it's hard to do that quickly sometimes on the Zoom. I was gonna add to what Counselor Abel said, as far as some of the things we've seen at the federal level over the past few weeks, with the Supreme Court justices being threatened to the point that the Department of Justice is providing round-the-clock protection for them, and our U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland made the following quote last week, "The rise of violence and unlawful threats of violence directed at those who serve the public is unacceptable and dangerous to our democracy." I want to be clear, while people vote, argue, and debate in a democracy, we must not, we cannot allow violence or unlawful threats of violence to permeate our national life." This is from our U.S. Attorney General. So that is almost identical to the quote that I put in our recent Looking at Lakewood, about what a threat to our democracy it is, that we are receiving threats of this nature at the local level. I'm very dismayed that the city has not taken this seriously, has not provided protection, has not provided communication. Our city management and leadership and mayor have failed to protect us as a council, as elected officials, failed. So the reason I didn't get in on that vote earlier is I had to call some of our men in blue because of some shenanigans going on in front of my house earlier this evening, and I was out speaking with them, and they were very, very professional and kind, I will say. We have some really good people on the force. But part of the reason I had to call is because I have to be on high alert about anything going on like that, because nobody else is in this city. And, you know, it's really unfortunate, even if you don't care about me, even if you disagree with me politically, it's very telling that our mayor, who had this threat come out of his email address, and I'm gonna say, because everybody's...
That's not accurate. It did not come from my email address. You need to stick to the facts.
No, 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 let me finish. Everybody's freaking out about that.
Clarify that that came from, "A Paul," please clarify that. That is not, that is, I'm not gonna...
You don't have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
I'm chairing this meeting, and you need to speak, this is very serious, and you need to be accurate in what you say. It did not come from my email.
Allow me to finish my sentence.
Go forth.
My sentence is, I am not blaming the mayor for this. I have been told that his email address was spoofed, okay? I am not blaming the mayor. Although his breaking in like that makes him look pretty suspicious, I would say. But even if you don't agree with me, the fact that it came from an official's email address, it, something like that could come from any of our email addresses, apparently, and we don't have a way to get to the bottom of it, that, at the very least, has to be concerning to the people on this dais, because it could come from any one of your email addresses and make you look bad. How are we not concerned about this? Anyway, there was an article about me in the Jefferson County Transcript on May 9th, about my defending of Mayor Allen, and my hopes that the verdict would raise red flags that lead to change, and I really think they already have. And I really think the good people on our force are looking at those things, even if it's behind the scenes, and we're not talking about it, I really think that they are, and I think that's a very, very good thing. I was also, I wanted to say that I was at a campaign meeting in Denver where the STAR program came up again, and this was over the weekend, and really, really would love our city to look at that again. When I was in Washington, D.C., people all over the country were talking about the STAR program in Denver, and what a wonderful program that is for dealing with mental health, substance abuse, homeless issues, without having to call the police in, saving funds, saving budget, saving people from ending up in jail who don't belong there. I think that is really something we should look at as a city. And also, there was a lot of discussion in Denver about how much affordable housing is going unused right now there. So many units unused, because they are saying, "Affordable for who? For who? We need public housing." And there's a lot of discussion around that in Denver, and I hope that we can look at that and sort of change the definitions, affordable for who. All right, thank you.
Okay, word four.
No report.
Okay, word five?
Okay, thank you. Word five, we have a very exciting meeting actually coming up on Saturday, June 4th. It'll be a hybrid meeting. We'll be meeting at Westwood's Church. And we'll be featuring a special guest, Joyce Kitchen. So Joyce Kitchen is actually a nonprofit that operates out of the basement of Westwood's Church with the desire, intention, and work of bridging not only the high amount of uneaten food that is a part of our community, but also addressing the needs of our hungry. So every day in Colorado, around 40% of the food that comes from our retail food system becomes waste, very high number. I was surprised about that number. So Joyce Kitchen merges that and tries to meet the needs of our community members. So what we'll be doing in our Saturday meeting on June 4th at 9:00 a.m. is welcoming Joyce Kitchen. We'll hear a little bit more about what their work looks like. And we'll be able to do a tour as well as potentially lend a hand that morning for anybody that is there in person and would like to stay. One thing that we are also doing that morning is, as this is maybe a little bit late into the spring cleaning season, but for any of our neighbors that have old towels and sheets that they are no longer using, we will gladly accept those and pass them on to Foothills Animal Shelter as well. So using this also is an opportunity for a drive to help our four-leggeds. And that's my report.
Great. Counselor Jansen?
Thank you. Thanks, Wendy. Thank you, Counselor Strom, for such a great report. So I had the privilege to attend an open, opening a restaurant. It was Raising Cane's. It's pretty, I didn't realize how big it is, but it's huge. And there were tons of people there. And Josh from West Metro was there, and we were able to lend an opening hand and scissors to open up the restaurant. And so I just, and it's over on Bellevue and Wadsworth, if anybody wants to go. Here, it's really good. I wasn't able to test it, but I will go back there this week.
Word one?
No report.
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, June 4th at 9:30, we will have my word one meeting at Holy Shepherd Church and online. We also will have a hybrid, hoping that the positivity rate for COVID goes back down so that we can continue meeting at Holy Shepherd Church. So thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening.
Okay, a few community updates. Some of us had the opportunity to go to the Lakewood Police Awards for the Belmar shooting incident. And gosh, what a powerful presentation and celebration, not only of the heroes of our police department, but the citizens who were engaged and the heroics that they faced and faced the gunman down. So my hope is that there'll be a condensed version that we can play at the city council meeting. And most of all, we had the opportunity to meet for some, many people the first time and celebrate Agent Ashley Ferris, who ended the threat and in so doing, was wounded in the line of duty. And I think she is anxious to get back. She is incredible. And if you saw any of the news reports about her, she started with wanting to talk about her giving thanks to the community. And I thought, how powerful is that? Not about, you know, the incident or what happened, but she wanted to thank the community for all their love, support, and care. And my goodness, the men and women of our police department are top-notch, and I can't say enough about them. So look forward to that. We'll hopefully have that, something that we can show here. Hats off to the Green Mountain High School lacrosse women's team, state champs. Limb drop-off at Jefferson County Fairgrounds, 8:30 to 4:00, I think, every day through Saturday, May 23rd through the 28th. And then a big first Friday to celebrate 40 West Arts new building will be on June 3rd. And there'll be an event in the late afternoon with some dignitaries, potentially the governor, to come and welcome in that new building. So lastly, I'll close with this. You know, we take everybody's safety seriously. And our police have engaged in this investigation. Our police are aware when we're meeting. And I've also asked Counselor Springsteen if she needs accommodations to let me know and that we would work with her. To a person, many people have received threats, to the point where there's camera systems on my house. I've said this in the past. And not only threats, but vile accusations made against members, including myself, that are out in the community. And I know, Counselor Springsteen, you think that's funny, but none of this is funny. And sadly, a lot of it's perpetuated by folks on this council who have people in the community making just absurd allegations that are hurtful and harmful. And it needs to end. And so everybody has an opportunity to say that we won't tolerate it. My friend Alec Garnett, Speaker Garnett, had to wear a bulletproof vest last year to the Capitol. It's very unfortunate. And I know we all take all of our safety seriously. And our police department is always aware of what's going on. And so, you know, if there was a way, I think, to find who wrote that email, they certainly would be all over it. So it's unfortunate, but we all have the opportunity to say enough is enough. And that means you too, Counselor Springsteen. You can put an end to some of this yourself. That's all I have to say. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting at 8:30 p.m.